Okay, I'd like to call to order the special call meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 20th, 2020. I'll call the roll. Nash?
Here.
Perrigen?
Here.
Beasley Brown?
Here.
Denning? Okay, the first item is approval of the minutes for the special meeting on September 15th, 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. I have a correction on the last item on page seven. I think it was double printed. Perrigen and Wilkerson voted nay for the amendment that all five voted yea for the remainder of the ordinance. Any issues that we went back and looked at that to ensure that that was correct online? Knowing that that correction is there, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes, Mayor, sir. Is it possible that we can move Mr. Bunch's item up on the agenda as we have done in other meetings with other agendas?
I have no objection if that's permissible under a special call meeting, Hillary, to rearrange the agenda?
I think that's fine if you all agree to do that.
All right then, we'll move to number...
I think if the agenda is correct, his, the one he's here for is item number 25 on the ITA.
You got the 20, 21, and what was 25?
Five, just the intent to finance.
Okay. Well, we'll move to item 20, which is municipal order 2020-166, municipal order approving job development incentive program employee withholding credit agreement with Lord Corporation, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. Mr. Mizel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The ITA approached us some time ago to see if the city and the county would be interested in issuing a second round of bonds for...
Hold on just a minute. We're talking about the J-DIP for, on item 20, the municipal order 2020-166.
Jeff, I'll take that one if you'd like.
Sorry about that. I mixed up. Go ahead, Katie.
This is a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement that was discussed with the JDI committee back in January of 2019. So it took us a little while to get this one done. Lord Corporation went through a tie-up by Parker, I think it's Hanifin Corporation, and so we wanted to make sure to have the name correct. This is 30 new jobs. It's an estimated $4 million capital investment. It would be a 10-year Kentucky Business Investment Program credit where the city would match 1% of our 1.85% over the 10-year period with the state providing up to 3% credit. And the 1% credit that the city would be providing would be worth approximately $156,355 over the 10-year period for Lord Corporation. This is the second JDI agreement with Lord Corporation. The first one was initially approved in 2007, and that was before the KBI program. So it was a five-year agreement, and it has already expired, but that that is already in place now.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Dana?
I was gonna say congratulations to this company for getting an award today from the Targeted Business and Industry Award. They're really, really doing great things.
I'm sorry. May I misspoke? Dana, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the chamber again for just bringing, continuing to bring new projects despite the challenges of 2020. This continues to be a bright spot in the work that you're doing. So just thank you so much.
All right, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-167, municipal order approving amendment to the job development incentive program employee withholding credit agreement with CGS Machine and Tool Incorporated, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. Is this Katie as well?
I can take this one real quick. This is just a correction to a prior municipal order for CGS Machine and Tool with their JDI agreement. Previously, we had stated, and this came from their application, that there was going to be apparel of $2.4 million, $2,484, but this should have been corrected and it should have shown 655,000 annual payroll, 655,200, which will generate approximately 6.5 million over the 10-year period, and their incentive would roughly be $65,000, the 1%, if I'm correct on my numbers. Katie, do you have anything to add?
That's it.
This is just a correction of a previous approval.
Any comments or questions?
Mayor?
Joe?
One of the questions I always ask whether it pertains to this one or the next one we have on the agenda is, I realize there's certain things with the city that comes directly to the city based on payrolls, et cetera, but is in any of these agreements that we, here to the best of our ability, that the individual companies are hiring in relationship to the availability of individuals in the community? Who does that?
Ron, do you want to take that one?
Could, Joe, you mind re-stating the question? I want to make sure I'm answering the right question.
Ron, what I'm concerned about, and people always asking me, and I'm sure maybe others, when a company is asking the city to do things for them such as occupational tax, payroll tax, et cetera, is have the responsibility of making sure that those individual companies are hiring minorities, women, others in relationship to their availability. Now, I know that we have had problems in the past and may still have some finding qualified individuals for certain jobs. I'm interested in the fact that we want them to have qualified individuals as well as having some of those individuals that are qualified, minorities, blacks, women, et cetera. Am I making myself clear?
Yes, sir. So I don't know of any specific requirement in any of the state or local incentives in this state or any other state that is specific to that type of requirement, but I will say that every company that we work with existing and new, we connect them with the public workforce system, and different entities in the community are connected into that public workforce system, and they make referrals to these companies of qualified candidates. So I think, for example, the Housing Authority is a mandated partner. So there's multiple organizations and agencies working together, and I know they reach out through the International Center. So I think through those entities and working with goodwill as well, whatever qualified candidates flow through those organizations, they're then being referred not only to the company immediately hiring, but to any of the companies that are hiring. So I think your vision is being accomplished through that system, Joe, and maybe a further conversation with them about the flow of candidates into their system and referral of candidates would give you some more insight into the level of activity that they're seeing. Because they're funded by tax dollars. I think, I think our public workforce system gets about $10 million a year in tax dollars to operate that system, so.
Can we ask, Ron, as a part of the paperwork that is forwarded to you or to us, the numbers? Well, we can take a look at it, too?
You're talking about having the individual companies respond on that?
As a part of them being the recipient of any of the city funds, whether it be delayed action down the road, or whatever our agreement with them is, that they, through documents, let us know that they're making a good faith effort to hire individuals in the Bowling Green community, minorities, blacks, everything that we've got based on our input funding-wise.
Jeff, do you have your hand up?
If Commissioner Denning, if you'll look in your packet at this revised agreement for CGS and look at paragraph five on page three, the company agrees to certify that it is an equal opportunity employer and agrees that it shall not discriminate in hiring and employment because of race, color, creed, national origin, religion, and so on. So it's in every J- Job Development Incentive Agreement that we make the company sign off on that, that they will make 100% effort to abide by that when we do the incentive with them. So it's in, it's in our agreement, and I think it's a agreement as well.
But are we provided documentation that these efforts are being made either in the result of hiring individuals or making the best effort to have hired these individuals? In other words, what comes to us, in other words, money, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just trying to get to the point to where we can see what is actually taking place. When I walk into a factory, old Joe Denning, they're making different, whether they're making widgets or whether they're making tractors. Joe Denning, and I've done it because there's no problem that's called that sort of thing, because hell, many of the individuals up there are minorities, no question. But when I go into any other factory, like we used to do as a commission, take a tour of every one of the factories on a weekly basis, walk into a plant, and the first thing I look at is the floor. Who is out there on the floor? Women, the whole work. That's Joe Denning. Nobody told me to do that, Joe Denning. That's the way I look at things. I want to see who's working there. And I have in the past asked management where are? Well, you know, they would tell me whatever they felt comfortable telling me. That's the only thing I'm getting at. Leave the numbers.
We rely on the state economic development cabinet to give us the final approval of these incentives, because the state gives these companies 3% on top of our 1% with the state withholdings. So they must be good with the state before we ever start them at our level. So someone has got to be looking at them in Frankfurt and giving them the okay that they're eligible for the incentive, they've hired the right number of people, they meet all the guidelines under the state Kentucky Business Investment Program and so forth. So that's what we're relying on, is them to be the checkpoint and the reviewer of all the incentive agreements and incentive programs that we are piggybacking on with the state's 3% incentive. Does that make sense?
But the people here in Bowling Green, Kentucky are not going to call John Doe, International Director of Recruitment for mining, factoring, and jobs. They're going to call us, old Joe Denning, old Slim Nas, old Sue Perrigen, old Dana, they're going to call us. Well, I sent so-and-so out there to try to get the job the other day, and, you know, he's D degree, and for whatever reason, and the company may be right, don't know, they weren't able to hire him. Those are the things that we need to be prepared for. The elected officials, the people around the corner are going to be contacting us. You see what I'm saying, Ron? And I'm going to call Jeff Mizel, Ron Buck, and say, hey, look, can you tell them what's happening at the John Doe Company? We sent some people out there that appeared to be qualified, and get me out. What are their numbers? I think we have a responsibility to see those numbers ourselves, not be depending on Frankfurt and what they're doing up there in their building. We need to take a look every so often, whether it be quarterly or whatever, as to where our money is working.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
To respond to your question, I would just go back to what we usually get tax dollars in these JDI agreements, and why don't we be proactive? Why don't we find out how many candidates are seeking employment through the Regional Workforce Board and how many they get placed? This way, we're actively working to place them and track our success that way versus looking at the anomaly when we have a complaint. Because, I mean, they exist for the local government, the regional workforce board, and all the partners, Experience Works, Housing Authority, all those different partners required by law to work together to help any and every job seeker. So why don't we work through those people that are supposed to report all this stuff, and let's find out how many people need to be placed, and let's see how successful they are at placing them. Let's be proactive, I guess, is where I would go with this.
I have no problem with that, Ron. I think with our man in that spot, I know any of us can call him at any time and say, get me out. What's going on?
Yeah.
We are...
We can have him do a regular report.
Agree with you. I have no problem with that. The room, Mayor, I'm sorry.
All righty. Nothing else? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. And now we go to what you had originally started with, Jeff, number 25. Municipal Order 2020-171, municipal order declaring the city of Bowling Green's official intent to finance a public project acting in cooperation with Intermodal Transportation Authority, ITA Incorporated of Warren County, consisting of the purchase of land construction and infrastructure improvements for the expansion of the Kentucky Trans Park and taking other related action motions, Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. Jeff?
So as I mistakenly was starting into earlier, the Trans Park is nearing full capacity as it is. There's over 3,200 jobs up there currently with more on the way. The chamber and the ITA has approached the city and the county with a proposal as to whether we could do another bond issue in order for them to develop more land up there. They recently purchased some land, a big parcel, roughly 300 acres along with some other undeveloped land that they had that they are needing to develop to put more lots in up there. So Katie and I and Hillary have been working with Ron and Meredith and others, as well as the judge and Greg Burl with the county, to try to figure out what we can do as far as providing them with some bond financing. This would be another general obligation bond with the county partnering with the city 50/50. The county would have an annual lease, we believe, but what we have before you tonight is just an estimated intent to finance. This would be a max number. We're trying to get the numbers down as we speak on the costs, but this is an intent to finance. What this does is it covers us for any expenses that we might incur, or the ITA might incur going back 60 days. So if we wanted to get started on a few things and incur some costs, we would still be able to pay for those costs with this bond, issuing the bond proceeds. I'm going to turn it over to Katie to kind of fill in the details on top of that, but that's kind of the gist of this. We're basically asking for permission to proceed with this intent to finance tonight as municipal order. We would come back with you later with more nailed-down cost, a bond ordinance, and a bond sale, and more detailed numbers. Katie?
I think that covered most of it. Again, reiterating that this is a cap amount, a not-to-exceed amount. So as Jeff mentioned, we're still trying to work on getting to the right number, but it certainly would not be higher than the number identified in the municipal order.
Sue, did you have a question?
Yeah, not really a question. You know, Jeff and I serve on this board, the ITA board, and it's an outstanding board. I want to let you know that these people are really focused on helping Bowling Green to grow and move in the right direction and jobs, better jobs. But I guess I'm going to maybe pick on Ron just a little bit, because I'd like for the citizens to hear. I believe we have three current projects going on that have been, you know, kind of put out there in press releases over the last few weeks, and just brag on yourself a little bit of what we've got coming out there in the Trans Park. And these are the reasons why we really need to purchase more land and keep going. The money comes right back to us in the form of occupational taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. And, you know, the ITA is a creation of the city and the county. This is a public body, and we appreciate the opportunity to work for that group and work for the city and the county on that. And we have had some good success. In fact, we actually closed the transaction today, selling lot 4D and lot 4C as one contiguous lot. Dollar General will be building a new Fresh Distribution Center there. So during the pandemic, we were able to meet with them and within 30 days close the transaction, where they'll build 160,000 square foot facility. So that construction activity will be happening right now. We did sell lot 13-2 recently. Lot 13-2 is near the elevator water tank in the Trans Park. I met with the owner of that lot at, you, our electric, to start construction. Another project we haven't announced yet, we will be selling the spec building. It should close here within less than 30 days, and we'll have another project kick off there. That project's had another 110 jobs in the Trans Park. So there have been several projects, and right now we have what I would characterize as three active projects that are looking. We actually were on site today with members of a team for a project that's even bigger than the Crown project, and probably the biggest project that I've talked about up until this moment is Crown. So Crown ended up being the governor's first project from beginning to end. If you drive out there right now, Crown sits on 44 acres in the new expanded part of the Trans Park. It's a $147 million project. They're putting the steel up on it now. So if you want to see what a half million square foot pad looks like in a 327,000 square foot building that will ultimately employ 126 people is being built right now in the Trans Park. And that kind of success is only made possible through the great cooperation that we have with you all, with the utility partners, with the talent partners, with the state, and everybody else. And so we're quite proud of that, and we just, we want to continue that momentum, that success. I think most of you all are aware, if not all, that we've been very blessed to be nationally ranked for seven consecutive years for economic development. Two years ago, we were ranked number one in the country. Currently, we're ranked three in the country. We want to keep that level of success and continue to really improve quality of life and improve the diversity of jobs here. And having additional property will allow us to continue that momentum.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dana, did you have a question?
I just wanted to thank everybody. I know Ron always talks about how it's a big team and includes a lot of folks coming together, and I think it's just another example of how wonderful our city is, that despite what a hard year it's been, that we do have so many exciting projects coming. And I'm just, it's really a great position to be in, to need. It's a good problem to have, to need to buy more land and to expand our Trans Park. And so I just want to, you know, say thank you to everybody who is involved in bringing these projects. As I talk across the state, they're always asking about Bowling Green and our economic development, and what are you all doing down there in Bowling Green? That's amazing, all these products that are coming. And I know so many folks would like to be in the position that we are in. And so just, I just thank you, everybody, for all that you're doing to help improve quality of life and create jobs that support families. So just keep up the good work, and thank you all so much.
Mayor? Joe?
I guess this is to Katie. Fill us in on our bond structure there now and what we may still owe payoff time, et cetera.
I don't have the final payoff amount. We had refinanced the bond a few years back for about, I think it was 15 million total. It will be paid off in 2024, September of 2023, so fiscal year 2024. And we would issue this new bond, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, if possible, and have just a few years of double bond payments. But like I said, the existing bond ends in September of 2023.
Okay. Well, for those that don't know, when this subject first came up, and I was one of the ones that went down to Alabama, what, that has the Trans Park, Ron, what city is that?
Huntsville.
Yeah, because they had a crazy elevator down there, and I didn't get on it. But anyhow, when the word mentioned, was mentioned pertaining to Trans Park here in Bowling Green, I want you to know, everybody thought the world was going to come to an end. It did not. It's been one of the best moves that has ever been made in Warren County, including the city of Bowling Green. Some of those that thought lived in immediate areas thought, of course, we were going to have 747s and Air Force jets and everything coming in. Yet, but it has turned out to be one of the best decisions that we've ever had in this community. has turned out to be one of the best decisions that we've ever had in this community. Hold on, what you saying?
Anything else? Call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beastly Brown?
Yes.
Danning? Wilkerson is yes. And we'll go back to the original order of the agenda for item number one, which is the second and final reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty, number twenty-eight. Ordinance amending zoning ordinance, ordinance amending Article Five, Sections five point one use table and five point two use categories of the zoning ordinance for the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City County Planning Commission, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is the second reading. Are there any additional questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beastly Brown?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is the second and final reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty, twenty-nine, ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing point eight, eight, two, three acres from highway business and RM three, uh, townhouse, multifamily residential to RM three townhouse, multifamily residential located at zero Audi Court, presently owned by BGF Investments LLC, Caro John Groves, and a portion of five eight four four Scotts Road, presently owned by CSR BG Investments, Caro Chris Robertson, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. And it's the second reading of the unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Are there any additional comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beastly Brown?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is second and final reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty, number thirty, ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number one of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. And this is second reading of a budget amendment. Were there any further comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beastly Brown?
Yes.
Dana? Wilkerson is yes. Next is the second and final reading of ordinance number BG twenty twenty, number thirty-one is amended. Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance amending chapter twenty-five code of ethics of the city of Bowling Green code of ordinances to amend subchapters relating to definitions, standards of conduct, conduct, conflicts of interest and contracts, gifts, financial disclosure, order of ethics and penalties is recommended by the order of ethics and city staff is motioned by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. And I think, uh, Mr. Pruitt asked to, uh, speak on this first and I'll we'll get to ask Mr. Pruitt from the ethics board.
Mayor, I just, uh, would tell you, we sent a letter out yesterday to the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the, uh, of the Board of Ethics. Um, and then I'll let that, I'll let that be our statement and stand.
All right. Thank you. Dana, did you hit a comment?
Yes, thank you. More my hand on here as well. Uh, first, I want to thank the Board of Ethics for their work to strengthen our code of ethics. I know you all have taken this seriously and the recommendations you've set forth are the result of your hard work. And my goal is to work with you toward our shared goal to hold our public officials to the highest ethical standards while also being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. The question before us is how do we do this? And I believe that we can hold city officials to the highest ethical standards without excessive fines. And across our country, cities are doing just that. And so the question is, how are they? Um, so to answer this question, I started by researching how other cities in Kentucky hold their elected officials to the high standards through penalties and fines. And so I researched among other things, the maximum monetary fine that can be issued by an ethics board and if legal fees could be assessed as well. And keep in mind that these Board of Ethics, like Bowling Greens, have the power to recommend removal or suspension. And while each of these codes of ethics has this provision, they differed on monetary fines. So some examples from Kentucky cities, our size are larger. Louisville has a maximum five hundred dollar fine. Lexington has a maximum five hundred dollar fine plus penalty equal to benefit gained. Owensboro, Covington, Paducah, Georgetown, Florence mirror our code of ethics with a maximum penalty, penalty of a thousand or penalty equal to economic benefit conferred, which means if they stole something, they have to give it back. Uh, and in none of these cities could the Board of Ethics recoup legal fees from the violator. Uh, but my research enough stopped at our state borders. In our, our last meeting, we were told that Seattle and Sacramento were examples of cities that could recoup unlimited legal fees from the violator. However, I read both Seattle and Sacramento's court of, code of ethics, and I called both of the cities to confirm I understood their ordinances. And these cities do not have unlimited punitive legal fees. Um, they can recoup legal fees from someone who violates an ethics ordinance, but only up to their monetary fine cap. And so across the board, no matter where I look, there is a cap for everything, which leads to another question of why. Um, so after learning more about this issue from, um, judges that I reach out to, attorneys and other legal professionals, um, the answer is the Constitution. In both the U.S. and Kentucky Constitution, excessive fines are unconstitutional. The Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution says excessive fail may not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel and unusual punishment inflicted. This amendment echoed in section seventeen in the Kentucky Constitution. As recently as twenty nineteen, the United States Supreme Court held in a unanimous ruling that the Eighth Amendment applied not only to federal government, but also states and local municipalities. The facts of the case are as follows. In twenty nineteen, Tyson Timms pleaded guilty in Indiana State Court to dealing in a controlled substance and conspiracy to commit theft. At the time of Tim's arrest, the police seized a Land Rover SUV Timms had purchased for forty-two thousand with money he really had received from an insurance policy when his father died. The state sought civil forfeiture of Sims Timms vehicle, charging that the SUV had been used to transport heroin. Observing that Timms had recently purchased the vehicle for more than four times the maximum ten thousand monetary fine assembled, assessable against him for his drug conviction, the trial court denied the state's request. The vehicle's forfeiture, the court determined, would be grossly disproportionate to the gravity of Tim's offense and therefore unconstitutional under the Eighth Amendment's excessive fines clause. This case made it all the way to the Supreme Court. Writing the majority opinion for our unanimous Supreme Court ruling upholding that trial court's decision in Timms versus Indiana, Justice Ginsburg wrote the following: "The Eighth Amendment's excessive fines clause is an incorporated protection applicable to the states under the Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause. The Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause incorporates and renders applicable to the state's Bill of Rights protections fundamental to our scheme of ordered liberty and is deeply rooted in this nation's history and tradition. The prohibition embodied in the excessive fines clause carries forward protections found in sources from Magna Carta to the English Bill of Rights to states' constitutions from the colonial era to the present day. Protection against excessive fines has been a constant shield throughout Anglo-American history for good reason, for such fines undermine other liberties. They can be used, for example, to retaliate against or chill the speech of political enemies. They can also be employed not in the service of penal purposes, but as a source of revenue. The historical and logical case for concluding that the Fourteenth Amendment incorporates the excessive fines clause is indeed overwhelming," end quote. So if we add unlimited legal fees to our code of ethics and pursue legal reimbursement that is more than the fine from the violation itself, we would most certainly be challenged in court. We would chase these fines with even more legal fees, only to arrive at the same point other cities have, that these are considered excessive fines, which violates the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution to the Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause and section fifteen of the Kentucky Constitution. Not only will adding this language end up costing the taxpayers more money in the long run, as an elected official, I took an oath to uphold these constitutions. Therefore, I cannot vote to add unlimited fines. So if adding the proposed language, uh, will not keep our costs down, what will? A fellow from the Harvard University for Ethics, uh, the, they created a nonprofit called City Ethics to equip cities with the resources and knowledge they need to hold leaders accountable. And Robert Wetchler, the director of research at City Ethics, wrote about this issue that we're dealing with of legal fees accrued during an ethics investigation. And he wrote, "It's important to recognize that an ethics proceeding, if handled properly by both the respondent and ethics committee, is not a life and death matter. Fines are usually limited or unavailable. In other words, in the great majority of cases, attorney's fees for a possible thousand dollar fine, or even just a reprimand, should not be tens of thousands of dollars, especially considering that ethics proceedings are usually administrative in nature, which means that the evidentiary aspect, the evidentiary aspects are relatively easy to handle. They are not trials and require very little legal expertise," end quote. Uh, thankfully, our, our Board of Ethics demonstrated this is attainable by processing over a dozen ethics violations just last week, um, without having to spend a dime. Um, so I believe that we can hold city officials to the highest ethical standards without excessive fines. And, um, like I said before, across our country, cities are doing just that. And, um, I would like us to, um, come together and, and work through the, the details of how we can strengthen our penalties, um, by doubling the current monetary fine cap that we currently have from a thousand to two thousand, require reimbursement of double the value of something stolen instead of just having to give it back, but they have to give back twice the value of what they took, and adding language to allow us to pursue reimbursement of legal fees equal to the amount of the monetary fine. Uh, I look forward to working as a Board of Commissioners with the Board of Ethics to develop language that satisfies the constraints of the Constitution while bringing us to our shared goal of holding, uh, elected officials to the highest ethical standards while being fiscally, fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. Um, so my vote tonight is to allow us the time to get the language right. It should not absolutely not be construed as voting against ethics or accountability. I take this position very seriously. And whether I'm a city commissioner or not, my faith calls me to uphold the highest ethical standards. And I believe if we can take some time to listen and learn from each other, because I think all of us have some really good points and concerns, um, we will realize that we all share the same goal and we can come back with language that will be a model for others to follow. So thank you all so much.
Sorry, Sue, I believe you were next.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, I don't have a lot of agree, uh, so, so I'm just going to give it to you from, from the heart. First of all, today, we're not voting on the original amended version, uh, the original proposal from the Ethics Committee. We're voting on, I mean, that was removed on our last vote, like three or four weeks ago. So, so that's not what we're voting on today. We're voting to clean up the rest of it as the Ethics Committee spent a lot of time working to, to tighten that up and make it, make it a lot nicer. But we did take out the amended, the amended, proposed amended version of penalties. So it's, it's, it's my hope that the next commission revisits this ordinance in January of twenty twenty-one and votes on the original amended ver- version of the code of ethics to include restitution if taxpayer money is spent needlessly. One of the main reasons that was cited for not passing the original ethics amendment was fear the committee could be weaponized. Well, in fact, there was an attempt to do just that. I received a total of twelve frivolous and unfounded complaints. We have not had the first complaint since the reason for this amendment was initiated. We haven't had any ethics complaints up until the, the, the word weaponized was used as it relates to our, our Ethics Committee. So I had twelve, uh, uh, the mayor had I don't know how many, a bunch, and, and Mr. Pruitt had an ethics complaint. The point I'm trying to make here is that whether we amend to pay restitution for taxpayer money being spent needlessly or not, the Ethics Committee can be weaponized. And in fact, there was a, a pretty concerted attempt to do so. Uh, so regardless of the language, it, it, it's there. Curiously, the only complaints filed to the Ethics Committee were the two yes votes and Mr. Pruitt. Now, that's curious to me. Uh, the, the yes votes to the amended version were, were, you know, Bruce and I, and then Mr. Pruitt presented that. Um, so, you know, I hope the citizens are paying attention. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I don't under, I, I didn't understand Sue's last comment.
Sue, did you hear the question? He did not hear your last comment?
I hope the citizens are paying attention.
I, I heard it. I didn't know what she meant by it.
Yeah, uh, it's pretty literal.
Will you explain it for me, please?
I hope the citizens are paying attention. That's, that's, that's all there is to it. It's pretty there. That's all I got to say.
Yeah.
Mike, did you have your hand? I'm sorry, Slim. Refinish.
That's all right. Proceed, proceed, sir.
Mike, did I see your hand up? Mike Riggs? No. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, the, the votes that we're calling on is for the...
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I think I saw Mike's hand. I don't know if there's a connection issue, but I, I think he is waving his hand.
I'm sorry. I tried, tried to get you, Mike. It might have froze up on me. Go ahead. You're still muted? Mike, I think you're still muted.
Don't have, okay. Can everybody hear me now?
There you go. Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
Howdy, my name is Mike Riggs. I don't know everybody. Uh, I live at one five zero nine Single Tree Way in Bowling Green, and I am a member of the Board of Ethics. Uh, I wasn't able to attend the first reading and was hoping today, as, uh, as Bea has and Sue has, to possibly get a restatement from all the commissioners and the mayor on why you voted on which direction on the original reading, if it's possible. Uh, we spent a lot of time on that and would really like a lot of clarification on the thought process behind why that specific part of it, the restitution part, uh, so I'm making that request if it's something that can be done at this, uh, reading.
Uh, Mayor? Ken, I think, I think Dana has spoken. Joe, did you want to speak to your comment?
Quite simply on my part, uh, I had concerns about the amounts of monies that could be involved in the accused having to pay. Uh, you know, uh, many of us don't have deep pockets to order. We can just dig in and come up with, uh, big attorney fees. And, uh, that was my thoughts then, and then it's my thoughts now. And that's the reason that I asked that it be worded, uh, the way it is tonight.
Okay, I think we heard from Sue. Slim?
Yeah, uh, I believe, uh, asking an individual to pay the government's legal fees gives rise to what is called a pervasive, uh, or perversive incentive. Uh, and what I mean by that is it's an unintended or undesirable consequence. A, a classic example of this would be that the British, and I realize that this sounds a little strange, but if you'll bear with me, I'll get to, I'll get to a point. And that is that the British government, uh, had a problem with snakes, specifically cobra snakes. And so they put out a bounty for citizens to bring in the number of, of snakes that they could catch of cobras and kill them. And what they found is that citizens... And what they found is that citizens started breeding cobra snakes so that they could bring them in and be paid for, which then led the British government to eliminating the bounty for British snakes, which then led to individuals who had been breeding the snakes to set the snakes free, and in the end, the British government ended up with more snakes than it had to begin with. Now, you might say, well, how does that make any sense with what we're discussing right now? I don't, you want to interject, Mayor?
I'm trying not to.
Feel free, feel free. And that leads me to the point that I believe that we can make a problem worse. It leads me to what is called the American Rule. And I, you know, we have attorneys who are here on this meeting, but it doesn't take an attorney to figure out what the American Rule is. The American Rule in the United States Justice System says that two opposing sides in a legal matter must pay their own attorney fees regardless of who wins the case. The rationale for the rule is that a person should not be deterred from seeking justice for fear of the prohibitive costs of doing so. However, there are countries that don't follow this. America, it's called the American Rule specifically because it's an American idea. There's the English Rule, and that is that it is exactly what is being proposed, or exactly what was proposed that was amended, and that is that those that are found guilty are responsible for the costs that the other side had to implement. The American Rule came about in the late 1700s as a result of the American Revolutionary War, where the United States, at that time, the 13 colonies, rejected the idea that somebody could be saddled with costs that would keep them potentially from seeking justice. Now, look, we can all dance around this issue, and we've danced around it a lot in the last meeting, but I'll be the one who outs it. I realize that these changes are a result of my being arrested, and I realize that they are a result of an investigation that came along because of that. I would point out that I pled guilty to the Ethics Commission from the get-go, from day one. Day one, I said that I violated the ethics rules and that I was prepared to suffer whatever the consequences may be. The board then decided to hire their attorney on their own and pursue an investigation nonetheless. So people may not like me, and I get it, and people may want to make me, and other people who make mistakes may want to make us pay for the mistakes that we've made. But here's what I can tell you, that doing so would be in a direct contradiction to what our founding fathers were trying to seek by creating another country. It's just, I mean, it's as plain as it comes that it's called the English law, where you force people to pay, and the American law, where you don't force people to pay. The American law is in place so that people are not dissuaded from seeking justice. And so you may wonder, where does the cobra come into play in this? The cobra's come into play because it can be weaponized. I'm not exactly sure what veiled comment Commissioner Perigin was trying to make of, I hope the citizens are paying attention. Citizens are paying attention every day, on every item, and not just on this one. But we can go out and create an even bigger problem than the problem that we may have seen to begin with. And I believe that's potentially what this does, because it would force someone to have to make a decision of, do I resign from office, or do I seek justice? Because most people who run for city commission, in my experience, can't afford to pay a $20,000 legal bill at the end of an investigation. So if I had been forced upfront to say, whatever the Ethics Commission incurs on behalf of investigating you over something that I pled guilty with to begin with, then it would have put me in a situation where do I say, do I go bankrupt, or do I continue to serve? And so if you don't see how that can be weaponized, then I don't know another way to explain it. Do I think that's what the Ethics Commission was out to do? I do not. I don't have ill will towards anybody on the Ethics Commission. I don't think that the Ethics Commission is out to try to punish me. I think the Ethics Commission is out to try to improve the process. I think we've missed the target on this one. Does that satisfy your question, Chef?
It does, Slim, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A couple of quick comments from me. First of all, Mr. Nash, Commissioner Nash, made mention of the fact that day one, he said he was guilty, and come forward with whatever you have to do to me, which he did. Just the thing pertaining to the outside legal person is the fact one. Crime was committed locally under the guise of the Warren County Sheriff's Department and the Bowling Green Police Department. No one had to go anywhere for depositions in any kind of way, everything was local. The expertise that sits on the Ethics Committee is I'm looking at these individuals now, in my opinion, could have handled this case without it having gone out the front doors. I have all the faith in these individuals, Barry, Jeff, Debbie. It was local. No one had to fly to Houston, Texas for a deposition. No one had to fly to Louisville, Lexington to find out something. Only thing they had to do was go across the street from where I'm seated right now, or down on Kentucky Street, where Barry Pruitt used to be, to get the information needed for this case. Period. No outside legal person needed. It's because I have trust and faith in these individuals I'm looking at right now. Could have been done legally in a few days, wasn't a reason for it to go, I don't know how long it did go, but it wasn't any reason for it to go, the investigation, in a great length of time. And I go back to it. All the information was right across the street here and down on Kentucky Street. Mayor, Debbie wants to speak.
Ms. Peoples?
Yes, with all due respect to Commissioner, we did feel that there was a reason for an additional investigation. There were some additional allegations made that we needed to get clarity on. And also, the city attorney, and maybe Jeff Mizel can correct me on this, I don't think the media has accurately reported the procedures for the investigations. If there is an ethics violation that involves an employee, the city attorney or the city manager will most likely handle that situation. But if it involved a city commissioner, or if it involves the mayor, the city attorney has to accuse herself and cannot represent the board. So we had to have outside counsel.
I guess, Debbie, I'm confused and don't need to know further, but you said there was something else you were investigating other than the specific charge. I don't even know what your charges were. What were the charges?
Well, we didn't believe we had all the facts on the charges, so there was some additional investigation needed. And again, we didn't have an attorney that could represent the board at that time, so we have to hire, you know, a special counsel to represent the board.
I was arrested, I spent the night in jail, I pled guilty, the police officer who arrested me charged me with a crime, and the Ethics Board chose to investigate something further. Is that your position, Ms. Peoples?
Well, it was all related to the violation.
So the officer who witnessed it, you didn't take him at his word? You felt like there was additional investigation that was needed?
There were several people who had comments about the situation.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm the last in line to explain why I voted for the ordinance as it was presented, is all of the members of the Board of Ethics are people that I know to be very straightforward, no matter who is at issue, whether it's me or any member of the Board of Commission. I respect their opinion, I'm sure they heard, as well as I did, that if someone were found guilty, that they should reimburse the city for the cost of the, or the expense of the investigation. And I agreed with their recommendation for having worked on it for months and months to try to come up with the appropriate response. And tonight, the vote is on the original amendment, excuse me, the original ordinance with the amendment to remove that provision, as Joe and Dana put forth last time.
I have a question before you move on, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
To follow up on what Ms. Peoples said, and I'm not trying to have a back and forth, anybody from the Ethics Commission is welcome to answer the question, but one of the things that I just heard is because there were several people that were complaining about other issues related to my arrest, I'm curious why the same application wasn't made to the most recent ethics complaints that were made. Now, I want to be on record, and I'll swear on whatever Bible that you want, that I have absolutely nothing to do with any of those ethics complaints. I'm much more straightforward. If I have something to say, I'll say it. I don't have somebody else say it for me, but several people complained about ethics violations, and there was no hiring of legal counsel, there was no need to get further into it to make some other kind of decision based upon something that's been heard, or something that somebody else believes. And I'm confused why the same logic, as was just explained, was not applied at that time.
Slim, I can probably answer that question. The complaints that were made most recently were specific factual complaints that only required the board to apply the Code of Ethics and state and federal law to those complaints. There was no additional investigation needed, the facts were all in the complaints, so they did not have to subpoena any extra documents, talk to any witnesses, it was simply application of the code and state and federal law to those complaints. Now, if they had needed specific legal advice, then we would have tabled those, they would not have been released, and they would have requested outside counsel. But as the facts were all similar, or at least similar for 12 of those, they were able to apply the code and the law to those complaints. I think in your case, the issue was that they needed additional documents that they were not able to get without subpoenas, which they were not able to issue, they needed specific advice from a lawyer, and I wasn't here for that, so I want to preface that by saying that, but they had particular legal questions that Jean was not able to answer for them, and they needed legal counsel in order to obtain factual information that they could not obtain otherwise. And they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that fairly states what happened last year or a couple of years ago versus what happened this week.
Who determined, Hillary, thank you for weighing in on it, I appreciate that, who determined that they didn't need specific legal advice on these most recent allegations?
Determine that, I advised, the Board of Ethics, I advised them prior to going into closed session, that as far as any complaints against BOC members, Board of Commissioner members, I would only be advising them procedurally if they had specific legal questions or needed further investigation, that they could then, similar to last year or two years ago, request outside counsel, which would be provided to them. Of course, Jeff Stein is the lawyer, they were able to look at the specific facts in the allegations, which were very straightforward and all extremely similar, I think 12 of them alleged the exact same thing. There was no need to go outside of what's in the Code of Ethics. They did get some information from the Kentucky League of Cities concerning public officials and their personal social media accounts, so they did have that as well. I believe that Jeff Stein also pulled the Matt Bevin case, which had some particular information relevant to officials and social media accounts, so they were able to apply all of that information without needing any subpoena power, any further investigative powers, or further legal advice.
So if an attorney had been on the board when I was arrested for alcohol intoxication, they wouldn't have needed outside legal counsel?
Again, I wasn't here for that, so they would be able to advise better, but one of the things I think they needed was someone who could help them obtain information that they could not obtain without an attorney. Things like issuing subpoenas for legal documents that they had no other way to get. And please, one of you all raise your hand if I'm not saying this correctly, but I...
An open records request wouldn't have provided them. First of all, I want to say, I really had no intentions of even speaking on this issue because of the inflammatory nature of it. I did so out of respect for Mike Riggs, who I have a lot of respect for, in an attempt to answer the question. I don't really want to relitigate my case, but at the same time, the letter that we received, the asking for an explanation, your additional explanation, really just feels like to me like we're getting further and further into the weeds about, you've said several times, Hillary, and I'm not, again, I'm not trying to make this personal, it feels personal to me, but I'm really hard trying not to make it personal. You've said several times that these most recent allegations were straightforward. I don't know how straightforward, more straightforward it can get than being arrested, jailed, pleading guilty, paying my fines and court costs, going in front of the Ethics Commission and saying I did wrong. I don't know how it gets any more straightforward, to use your words, than that. But yet, the Ethics Commission felt it necessary to seek outside legal counsel when you said a minute ago, they determined on their own they didn't need any specific legal advice in the most extreme cases.
I'll let them address that, because again, I wasn't here for that, so I don't have that experience. But I want to address one thing you said, and then I'll let Jeff or Barry answer. As far as open records go, open records requests do not apply to criminal cases. So they can get stuff from the Bowling Green Police Department, but they can't necessarily get what's in a prosecutor's file from an open records request. So there may be things, and if a case is pending, and I have no idea what your timeline was, but if a case is pending, those records are not released by the Bowling Green Police Department, there are, there may have been, and they can say better than I can, particular issues that they could not address without an attorney, without subpoena power. And I'll let Barry or Jeff answer that, because again, I wasn't here for that, so I don't know the timeline, and I don't know the specifics of what they needed and could not get without counsel.
Within a matter of days, my legal case was wrapped up.
Barry, I think you had your hand up.
Jeff had his up first, Jeff.
You're still muted, Jeff. You're still muted, Jeff.
Just one point of clarification, piggybacking off of Hillary, and both of us were not, were not involved in the, in the prior matter. Just, just because, and to answer one of Slim's questions, just because a lawyer is on the Ethics Committee, I can't act as legal counsel to the Ethics Committee. I, I don't know what the situation would be for somebody practicing in private practice, but I've got one client. I'm, I'm in-house, and so my ability for subpoena power and things like that is, is going to be limited as well. I, I did have one question from a historical perspective. When the Board of Ethics requested the use of special counsel, did that not come before the City Commission? And was it not voted on and approved, including the rates? Or, or I, I wasn't aware that the Board of Ethics could just engage on their own special counsel? Maybe somebody-
The Board of Ethics has been given authority in the ordinance to obtain special counsel. They coordinate with the city attorney and the city manager, as I understand.
I think the, I think the light-
So the answer to that, Jeff, Jeff, I want to make sure that you've got a straight answer to that. Like you, you ask a yes or no question. The answer is no. Going out for special legal counsel did not come before the City Commission.
Okay. And I, and I think the ordinance says may, may obtain or may request. I just don't know how hard and fast that rule is.
Barry, did you have a comment? Hang on, Joe. Barry, you were next.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Denning, I did walk across the street. I did talk to Sheriff Hightower about the case. There were some allegations that came up that we thought, not from a criminal side, but maybe as a, as a violation of the ethics policy, that needed to be looked into. We looked to the city attorney, Mr. Harmon at that time, and asked him some very basic questions, which he was unable to answer for us. So at that time, we made a decision as a board to seek an outside counsel, just because we weren't sure on how to proceed on those items.
What was the outcome of those items, Mr. Pruitt? I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought you were stopping. I apologize.
The, the special counsel in that did a number of interviews, and all of the, the results of those interviews helped determine the, what happened, what would happen, what our proposal would be for happening next, which was the suspension, the donating of the salary, and completing the EAP program.
So did the, did the additional $20,000 yield anything greater or more than what I pled guilty to the Ethics Commission when I first appeared before them?
The, and I want to make the, the difference here. You pled guilty to a criminal offense, and, and that was ruled in, in district court.
Well, I also said that I was guilty to the Ethics Commission.
Yes. We were investigating the ethics complaints and the ethical situation, realizing that the criminal side had already been handled.
I understand that. You weren't at that particular meeting, I don't believe, the, the one, the very first meeting. And, and I said at that time that I violated the, the ethics of the city of Bowling Green. I said it. And, and it's interesting to me that Hillary is saying, you know, and again, I, I hate that we're relitigating this. There's a little voice in, in the back of my head that keeps telling me to shut up and, and to myself, and, and I keep going a little further because it, this is clearly that the fact that we're having this much discussion over it indicates that it's not clear cut. It's not clear cut. Because you started an investigation on your own, Mr. Pruitt, when you walked across the street and had a conversation with the Warren County Sheriff. But yet, what I'm hearing from legal counsel is, you can't conduct an investigation on your own, and that's why you needed to hire an attorney to do so.
That's incorrect. We have, we can investigate these. It was just beyond our scope because we had some legal questions that we couldn't answer, and the city attorney wouldn't answer them or couldn't answer them for us.
And those specific questions that you investigated, that $20,000 was spent on, found what?
Well, I think that some of those allegations have been proven to be true. We might have taken a different direction at the end.
So they weren't proven to be true. So $20,000 was spent on an investigation, and at the end of that investigation, you knew the same amount of violations that I committed as the very first day when I walked in in front of the Ethics Commission and said, I violated the ethics, and I'm sorry. And I've embarrassed myself, and I've embarrassed my family, and I've embarrassed the city. And I said all those things. Again, you weren't there, and so I understand that, that you weren't, you don't have a memory of that. But the end of the investigation did not bring about any additional findings that I violated the ethics than what I initially admitted violating. Is that correct?
Some of those were inconclusive.
What does that mean?
It means they couldn't be proven whether they were true or false.
And so do I have a presumption of innocence or guilt?
We took the recommendations from the, from that based upon the information that was, that came back from the special counsel, with, with, with information that we could have not, could not have obtained on our own.
Thank you. Again, I, I want to be clear. I have no, this is an emotional issue for me, but, but I have no ill will towards anybody who serves on the Ethics Commission. But if we're going to go down this road, then we have to go down this road.
The language is written in there where that it said we may and may not, because there might be cases where we wouldn't do this, and where we did. But, you know, that's where it said that it, that it, that's available to us. And I think, I think this all goes back to right and wrong, and, and what we heard about, where it's a loophole, and we tried to, to close this loophole, because all we were hearing after that was that, that he should have paid back the $20,000. Now, whether I agree upon that or not, there was a loophole that needed to be closed, and that's what we've attempted to do here.
And what I've regularly heard is that the Ethics Commission shouldn't have ever spent $20,000 investigating something that I said that I was guilty of from the outset.
Well, and, and I, I appreciate that, but there was some, again, I say there were some questions that we could not answer. At that time, some allegations that came forward that could have proposed a very different outcome.
But in the end, didn't, correct? That's correct, in the end. Thank you.
I can call the commission's attention to the Ethics Ordinance, which was original language. The city, on 25-13, subsection one, in the event, or excuse me, the city attorney should be assigned to the Board of Ethics for its administrative support. In the event of an actual or potential conflict occurs, the Board of Ethics may retain, may retain private counsel at the expense of the city. And I'm aware that they coordinated with, through the, made the request through the city clerk to the city manager, were working in that. Dana, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to learn a little bit, something about the subpoena power. Hillary, just because it's been mentioned a couple of times, and it, what is the definition of subpoena power? Because I know we don't say subpoena power in our Code of Ethics, but it does describe to me what I think subpoena power means. Can you explain to me the difference between what subpoena power means and what is described as that power in our Code of Ethics? Because I, I just want to make sure I understand if that's some language we need to strengthen as well.
I don't have the, well, let me see if I can find it. Subpoena power would mean that they have the ability through counsel to issue subpoenas, to request documents that they may not otherwise be able to get, just by, for example, going over to the Sheriff's Department, going to the Bowling Green Police Department, or going to the Warren District or Circuit Clerk's Office. That they would need a, an attorney's help, or need an attorney's help figuring out even how to get documents. Sometimes in an investigation, you may not even know whether you need a subpoena to get a document, how to obtain that document. I think in this particular case, they had several issues that they needed assistance with, that they could not get without an attorney. And for example-
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I thought that is all described already in our Code of Ethics, that they have the authority to do all that. And so I'm just, I just want to make sure I understand what subpoena power means. And because I'm just confused, because I think it's all described there, that they have that power in our Code of Ethics. It just doesn't say the word subpoena.
I don't know that they have the, I guess they could go to the Circuit Clerk's Office and request a subpoena. I think, I really think to get particular documents and to conduct particular interviews, they felt like they needed an attorney. Now, I think there are some simple investigations absolutely the Board of Ethics could conduct. You know, we did the hearings the other day. If they felt like they need, just needed to touch base with a witness, or if they could do an open records request to get a document. But my understanding in this case is that the investigation, they felt like was more involved than that, and they needed an attorney's advice to both obtain information and to question witnesses. They did not feel comfortable handling that investigation.
And I apologize, this might be confusing. I'm not asking about whether they should have got an attorney to help them get some of these subpoenas. I'm not questioning that at all. I think absolutely we want to equip them to do their job. So my question is just purely, do they currently, in our Code of Ordinance, have subpoena power, not the word subpoena, but described? Is that, that language, Ashley, do you have it in front of you, that language that is describing?
Just, let me- I will say that as a part of any investigation, that would include subpoena power, and they do have the authority to investigate. Yeah.
If you look, Hillary, if you look on, at 25-13, Powers and Duties of the Board of Ethics, under 2B and C, I think it's what you're referring to, but it appears to me to refer to employees.
They can issue orders in connection. They can order people to answer. I don't, I don't think that this specifically refers to subpoenas. I think it's saying as part of either an official or an employee of the city, they can require that person to come forward. And as part of any investigation, if you know how to work the subpoena process, then, then I think that they could issue a subpoena. I think in this particular case, they weren't sure exactly how to investigate or how to obtain documents that they needed. That's my understanding.
I'm not, I am not, I don't have any problem with them getting an attorney to help them with the subpoena process. I'm just asking about our language. Is this another part that we need to strengthen as we're looking at other things that we want to do moving forward? So you're saying that that language described already in there is not describing subpoena power?
I think that they have subpoena power based upon their power to investigate. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Although, Hillary, I mean, it wouldn't have the force of a court of law behind it. I mean, we can ask somebody to produce documents. We can ask somebody to testify before us. If, if they choose not to, or refuse not to, or refuse to do so, then we have no recourse beyond that. I, I think if you, if you have a true subpoena issued by the court, and you want to compel testimony by somebody, you have the authority of the court behind you. We at the Board of Ethics don't have that.
With that.
Jeff, but you could, and, and here we're speaking hypothetically, I, I know that you weren't involved in my case, but there's nothing that prevents the Ethics Board from doing their subpoena to see if they get compliance in order not to spend the money.
Sure. If, if they knew how to do that and wanted to issue, well, let's call it a subpoena, but essentially an, an order to somebody to appear to testify, just based on the plain reading of section two here, the Ethics Board has the power to issue that order. They would, number one, have to know how to do that, and number two, be prepared, I guess, in the event that somebody refused to know what to do after that.
I guess that's where the, the administrative function of the, of the in-house attorney would come into play. That, that would, then it's not the attorney, you know, who has to work with the commission and then has to give it, it, it's an administrative function then, right? Explaining to somebody how they would issue such an order?
I, I think probably so. It, it would, you know, I'm, I'm walking a bit of a fine legal ethics line. I obviously could not go to court and request a, a subpoena be issued by the court on behalf of the Ethics Board, because I don't represent the Ethics Board anymore so than the situation where Hillary would have to recuse herself for conflict. But in terms of, yes, explaining administrative aspects of it, sure, it would, it might, it might be helpful.
But what, I'm not talking about a member of the board explaining that. I'm talking about the city's attorney explaining that. It's an administrative function then, and that's what the city's attorney's role in this is, is to explain administratively things that could be done. For example, Mr. Pruitt acknowledged that he walked across the street and had a conversation with, with Mr. Hightower. So that he, not Mr. Hightower, I apologize, with, with Sheriff Hightower. He could have asked Sheriff Hightower for any and all records that Sheriff Hightower had at that time. And if Sheriff Hightower would have turned him over, there'd be no need for a subpoena, correct?
I want to say, Slim, that I think Jean took the position that he was not involved at all. And when Barry or any of the Ethics Board members contacted him, I would have to read it again to see whether I would be able to do that in an administrative capacity. But I think then my name would have to be on the subpoena, which would create the appearance of a conflict, even if not an actual conflict, because it's an administrative act. I think he took the position that he could not assist them at all in any way with the investigation.
That's correct.
Do you take that same position for both the questions?
I'm sorry, Barry, would you repeat that, please?
Included in the simple, basic, general questions.
Okay. Slim, you were next.
Hillary brings up a, a good point, and that is that Hillary's position on these issues is different than our previous legal counsel's position on these issues. No, I'm saying, I'm saying that.
I did not say my position was different. I think if I were to put my name on a subpoena for an Ethics Board matter involving a Board of Commissioner, that regardless of whether it's an actual conflict of interest, it would appear to be a conflict of interest, and I would not want to do that.
I guess I'm asking, why do you have to put your name on the subpoena if you're only advising, in this case, the Chair, Mr. Pruitt, with all his years of law enforcement experience, how you're only advising him on how to issue an order to find more facts? Why does your name have to be on that, if, if you're only serving an administrative function?
Not I would advise him how to get a subpoena. I really can't answer right now. I have not been in that situation. I would probably get advice from KLC before I made that decision. I hope that the whole time I'm here, that never happens. I'm just, being here six months, I really can't advise. I can tell you that as city attorney, the last thing I would want to do is create any appearance of conflict of interest. And I think that was Jean's position, and he, he definitely said to me, always do everything you can to not get yourself into a conflict of interest. It's one of the first rules in law school. So, again, I would be very careful, like Jean was. Whether I would advise generally about subpoena power, I, I can't say right now.
I think we've had some discussion about this, unless there's anything else. The vote that we're taking is on the requested changes from the Board of Ethics, with the exception of reimbursement for legal fees, which is the ordinance as presented, and as amended. So this would be the second and final vote. So I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. I want to thank the Board of Ethics for sticking with us tonight, and I'm sure there'll be some other suggestions that you may want to consider that may come from us on the commission, or the public, or within your own self-generated thoughts. We'll look forward to hearing them if you- And we'll look forward to hearing them if you choose to present something else in the future. So thank you again. Next, we'll go to municipal order 2020-154. Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of William Wilson to the position of Operations Technician One and Tyler Shaw, Christopher Taylor, Trevor Young to the position of Laborer Two in the Public Works Department, motion by Wilkerson. Second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
We've had five vacancies in the Operations Division several months that we've been trying to hold on to and get through the COVID situation. We are now in, in, in true need of these to be filled with leaf season coming on as well as the snow season. Before you tonight, we've got four really good candidates to fill these positions. William Wilson would come in as an Operations Maintenance Technician One. He already has the CDL and a lot of good experience coming in. Christopher Taylor, Tyler Shaw have worked for us already in parks and bring good experience to the table as well as Trevor Young. Those three would come in at the labor positions and we are recommending to hire these gentlemen tonight to fill these vacancies in operations to keep things moving.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-155. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Jennifer Lightfoot to the position of Office Associate in the Finance Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
A couple of months ago, Brenda Webb, a longtime employee of the city and longtime assistant of mine in finance, retired. We're going to miss Brenda. Thank her for all of her years of service. Katie's been getting by, trying to get by without an assistant. But we're needing to fill this position. And we went out for application. We got 95. 51 went through the assessment for the administrative skills with Microsoft Office. And we narrowed that down to nine for interviews and we have selected Jennifer Lightfoot. Jennifer has been a bookkeeper at Aqualand Pools for the last seven years. Before that, she had experience with Diane Moat CPA and as an office assistant. We feel Jennifer is the right fit for this position and are recommending her approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll.
Mayor.
Sir, I'm sorry, Joe, I missed you.
I was going to ask the city manager, for our records as commissioners, can we have as a part of the municipal order, the individuals that is retiring? And that is an example of this person taking the place of?
Can you restate the question, Commissioner?
Can we have in our municipal orders, the name of the individuals that are retiring?
That's in the memo, first paragraph.
Okay. But as a listing here on the agenda document, can we have that person's name?
I'll defer that to Ashley.
Ashley, can we have that person's name?
You're on mute, Ashley.
Ashley's administering the meeting. She may not have, be able to access that.
We can check in, oh, and get back to you. But we, Ashley's saying, no, we can't do that. It's.
We'll check into it, Joe, and, and get back with you on what the situation is.
Okay.
Yeah, me or Ashley will follow up with you on that. Or Aaron.
Well, look, before we get back, let me just say my concern. Many cases, we have individuals that were, are retiring from employment in the city government of the city of Bowling Green. And a good many of those times, we do not know the names of the individuals that are leaving. So that's my point.
I think we publicize those in a, in a monthly newsletter. But and I try to recognize them every time we fill their position and rec, you know, and name, call them by name. So, but we, we'll work on that.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Sue, can you take over just a minute, please?
Sure thing, Mayor. Okay, we're gonna find my place here. Ordinance number BG 2020-32, first reading, non-binding. Ordinance relating to classification, pay, schedule. Ordinance amending the classification slash pay schedule G for general classified employees of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2021. If you don't mind, Joe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you make the second. Motion by Paragon, second by Denning.
Mr. Mazel.
Okay, as some of you should know by now, we had a resignation by Hunter Harris. He usually conducts these meetings and he's our broadcast specialist upstairs. Has done a lot of good things for the city last couple of years. He recently took a job in Nashville. And we, so we are without this position now. We went and took a look at the duties of this position. A couple of years ago, when we hired him, we were using outside resources to, to do these broadcasts of the meetings. And we were doing this meeting, BG News meeting, planning and zoning and hiring an outside person for those. And we decided to bring that in-house when we hired Hunter. And when we looked at the, the job after Hunter had been in this for a couple of years, we looked at all the responsibilities. Aaron Holes, he took a look at the responsibilities as well and felt like this needed to be at, at a higher level at 118 due to all the technical skills that are required listed there on your memo. Conducting the primary maintenance of all equipment and the monitors, the broadcast equipment, all the software involved. The troubleshooting during a meeting, something goes down, taking care of that with the software, as well as all the soft, all, all the software that they have to know. The Adobe Photoshop to be, put on these videos that we do with our social media, as well as our training videos with police and HR and all that kind of stuff. So in the end, we, we went with a recommendation of a 118 for this position going forward. And feel like that is in line with a help desk specialist as well as the other broadcast position or the, I'm sorry, the graphic designer position that we have as well that works closely with this person. So that's all this is, is a, a move from 113 to 118 as we, we go to look for a new person to fill this position.
Any comments or questions? I'm sorry, Jeff.
And we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? I, I have one. Did we, did we alter the job description at all for this position to add any responsibilities due to the increase in the pay scale and rate?
Yeah, we, we originally had this in as the 113, not knowing what all involved when we hired Hunter. And after seeing what all he had to get into, especially with COVID-19, the virtual meetings, of course, we're hoping that will go away soon. But it was a lot more involved, given that we didn't know what we were taking on in-house versus what we used to hire out the spectrum to do. And so we looked at all that and we came, we came to the conclusion we're at today.
Okay, thank you. I'll just finish this item up, Mayor. We're just gonna, anybody have a questions or comments, Slim?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Prof. Tim Paragon. Jeff, the, the question goes to you. We, Commissioner Paragon asked about the pay schedule. The pay schedule, the pay of positions used to be in memos. And, and it disappeared, or at least I'm not seeing it. If it's there, I apologize for taking up time for the question. If it's not there, I would like to see that be in memos in the future, provided it's legal for it to be in there. And I would assume it is because we're Republicans.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how those disappeared, but we'll check on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else's questions or comments before we call for a vote? I'll call for a vote. Mr. Nash?
Yes.
I really don't remember the order, Bruce.
Alphabetical is.
Okay. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Joe?
Ma'am.
Calling for a vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Paragon, yes. And Mr. Mayor Wilkerson.
Okay. That's the first reading that'll be brought back at the next meeting. Municipal order 2020-156. Municipal order approving contracts through competitive purchase with Best One Fleet Service of Bowling Green, Kentucky and Ziegler Tire and Supply in Massillon, Ohio, under the Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of Bridgestone, Firestone and Goodyear tires for the Public Works Department Fleet Division in a total not to exceed $75,000. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
Simply put, we use a lot of tires and especially the police cars require a lot of tire changes. And we want to get the most bang for our buck. And so the best way to do that is to go with the state pricing contract out there with this, these two companies, Ziegler. And the other one is one tire. Anytime we need tires, we can look on the list and see, well, we need a, an R17 and we need it, these specifications and Ziegler has this tire. And then we know that it's the lowest price out there that we can get. So this is, we feel is the best way. I think we've done this for a while now, but this is an annual thing that we do and recommend that we, we go with this cooperative purchase under the state contract pricing with Ziegler Tire and Best One Tire. We're estimating we would buy $45,000, no more than that from Ziegler and maybe approximately $30,000, no more than that from Best One Tire.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. Next item is municipal order 2021-57. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2020-104 for sidewalk rehabilitation project from Infinity Pipeline Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, amount of $70,222. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
We still have three sections of sidewalk downtown that are, are brick pavers that are, that are now have trip hazards attached to them. These three areas are 501 College, which is the Pioneer Cemetery. There's about 407 feet there. There's also 506 State Street in front of the Monastery School. There's 130 feet there. And then there's a 44-foot section of brick sidewalk in front of 1310 Chestnut. We went out for bids to, to take these out and we got two bids. One from Infinity Pipeline and one from Scott and Murphy. Infinity came in at the lowest bid at $70,222. They're going to come in and do all the work, remove the, the brick and put down pavement. And we are requesting your permission, approval to accept this bid and move forward.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Next is municipal order 2021-58. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2021-05 for fire department uniforms from Galls, Austin, E. of Lexington, Kentucky. And that's outdoor sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky, based on unit prices. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
In the 21 budget, you all approved the annual purchase of uniforms for the fire department. This would include some Class A formal uniforms as well as their everyday station uniforms and exercise clothing. They went out for bid and they got four bids, Nats, lawmen's and shooters, EMS uniforms and equipment in Galls. Galls came in with the best proposal for groups one through five and group eight and nine. That is your, basically most of your, your clothing items, including the Class A dress uniform. And then for the exercise wear and footwear, Nats is being recommended for, for that group of items. And these are pretty much low bid according to specs. And Chief, Deputy Chief Morrow has laid pretty much everything out in, in the memo and your packets. So I'll try to answer any questions, but request your approval for this item.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-159. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2021-06 for fire department equipment from various vendors in amount not to exceed $150,000. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
This is also part of your, the FY '21 budget that you all approved. The fire department had $150,000 included in their budget for public safety supplies, equipment and safety items. These are things that are on their trucks, things that they use on an everyday basis. The method they use, that we've been using for the last couple of years is that we go out for bid and there's roughly six, six bidders usually that bid based on a discount. And so they, they give a, a discount off the suggested retail price. And a group of firemen and fire chiefs look at this. How you weigh the best prices, the best discount. Deputy Chief Robert, Robbie Gillum worked on this. And in your packet, there are six bidders listed. And we are recommending all kinds of various awards to these vendors, highlighted in yellow in your packet in the spreadsheet. So any of the bidders will get some piece of the pie in this based on their discount that they are proposing. And we go with mostly the Finley Fire Equipment has a lot of them. There's pretty much all but, just a few got some of the items. But we always try to go with the highest discount. And that's how they went about with their decision in recommending approval for, for this bid with multiple vendors.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order 2020-160. Municipal order authorizing purchase of Titleist golf products for Crosswinds, Paul Walker and Riverview Golf Courses through non-competitive negotiations with Titleist of Chicago, Illinois in amount not to exceed $80,000. Mr. Mazel?
Every year, the golf course has to stock golf balls. Titleist happens to be the best-selling golf ball. And this is a sole source, being that you can't buy Titleist from Callaway or another manufacturer. So this is to be approval by up to $80,000. Don't think we'll ever get there. Don't think we'll ever get there, but this is to back up to stock. This golf balls are about 60% of our resale in merchandise and our biggest seller in the pro shops. Fisher, Nash?
I don't, I don't think we had a first and a second on that particular item.
Wilkerson and Perigent, if I missed it, I'm sorry.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure we were legal.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Next is Municipal Order 2021-61. Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid 2021-11 for tennis court resurfacing from Tennis Courts Unlimited of Water Lit, Michigan, in the amount of $59,972. Mr. Mazel?
During the FY21 budget process, again, you all approved the capital improvement project to resurface the tennis courts at Curiacas and the Covington Woods. We went out for a bid and got one, two, three, four, five, five bids. Lowest being from Tennis Courts Unlimited at $59,972. Recommend approval of this bid.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Danning? Wilkerson is yes. Next item. Municipal Order 2020-162. Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2021-02 for Crosswinds Golf Course Bunker Improvement from Parlane Outdoor Solutions of Albuton, Kentucky, in the amount $228,900. Mr. Motion by Wilkerson II, by Perigent, Mr. Mazel.
Other CIP project in the golf division, replacing the bunkers at Crosswinds. We went out for a bid. I got three bids, two where we declared non-responsive. And so we are recommending the Parlane Outdoor Solutions in Albuton, Kentucky, to finish up this work that we started on last season at Crosswinds Golf Course, replacing the bunkers. We are taking out some bunkers for the future, so we won't have to deal with them anymore. But this would complete that project and complete the remaining bunkers at Crosswinds.
Dana, did you have a question?
Who?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this coming out of the Parks Improvement Fund or is it general fund?
This is Parks Improvement Fund.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Municipal Order 2021-63. Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid 2120-21-12 for Police Department ammunition from Craig's Firearms Supply Incorporated in Knoxville, Tennessee, and Vance Outdoors Incorporated, Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $48,467.75. Motion by Wilkerson II, by Perigent, Mr. Mazel.
The Police Department is in need of restocking some ammunition for, for practice rounds as well as their, their duty ammunition. And so we went out for bid. We got three bids, Vance Outdoors, Craig's Firearms and Delta Nine. We are recommending issuing the 40 caliber and the nine millimeter go to Vance Outdoors at applicable amounts there in your memo, $22,250. We're going with Craig's firearm to supply the, the rounds for the 223 rifles. This is for the practice ammunition. And then as far as the duty ammunition, the 40 caliber and the nine millimeter would also go to Vance Outdoors. And in your packet is the spreadsheet showing the details of the bids for each of these items. Recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions?
Question, Your Honor?
Sir?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Jeff? Give me the number of the two issued firearms for the policemen.
Forty and a nine.
Forty and a nine millimeter.
We're buying 5,500 of forty and 2,500 rounds of the nine millimeter. We're on duty.
If we get the savings having one firearm rather than two issued firearms for on duty?
I'll talk to you about that off-screen, Joe. I don't know, I don't want to talk too much about some of that live. If that's okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Danning? Wilkerson is yes. Next is the first reading of Ordinance BG 2020-33. Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a portion of tract of land containing .25 acres from RN4, multifamily residential to HB Highway Business, located at 421 Scott Way, presently owned by Miller and York LLC. Motion by Wilkerson II, by Perigent. This is a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for this rezoning. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Danning? Wilkerson is yes. It's the first reading, the second reading will be at our next meeting. On item 17, which was Ordinance BG 2020, number 34, we had an email request, not from the applicant or his attorney, but from his planning group, Rob Swet of McBride, Dale and Clarion, requesting us to put this off to the next meeting. So we won't be dealing with it tonight. Next is Municipal Order 2020-164. Municipal Order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for flexible neighborhood grants with various neighborhoods. Motion by Wilkerson II, by Perigent, Mr. Mazel.
As you all know, we suspended the SNAP grants this year due to the COVID pandemic. And we introduced a more flexible program called the Flexible Neighborhood Grant. Kind of catchy. This is an alternative neighborhood grants. And so we, we did some proposals back in August, gave five of these away. And tonight we've got five more proposing to give Briarwood Neighbors $7,500 for new landscaping on Sherwood. Copper Tree Neighborhood, the Neighbors 1900 block of Sanders Street is going to receive $3,333 for installation of uniform locking mailboxes accessible to the homeowners from the sidewalk instead of from the roadway. Those are the ones that have the two-sided. I think that's a great handy idea. The Pine Point Homeowners Association requested $2,100 to assist with removal and replacement of trees at their entry, interfering with their power lines. Dishman McGinnis Elementary School has proposed $4,000 to assist with purchase installation of a digital reader board. So school community messages can be shown on that for multiple languages. I thought that was a great idea as well. And then lastly, Bowling Green Junior Women's Club, Club Coats for Kids Program has requested $1,500 for their special assist with purchasing new coats for families identified in the Family Resource and Youth Services Centers in the West Side Neighborhood. So proposing to give these away with the, with the Flexible Neighborhood Grants coming up. Don't have a total, oh, here, the total is $18,433. And recommend your approval of these.
Slim, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jeff, when we do things like the, the Sherwood entry into Briarwood, is the city then still responsible for taking care of those islands?
I don't believe so. I think those are taken care of by the neighborhood contractor. Either the neighbors mow it or the association. Brent, do you have any information on that?
That's correct. Those medians and islands are a result of the neighborhood responsibility. So we have those in various other neighborhoods as well. So it's their responsibility. So what we're allowing them, or not allowing them, what we're assisting them to do is to beautify those spaces. But they're responsible for the maintenance of those spaces.
Are they responsible for those spaces before they receive these grants or then after?
Before. They're responsible for them either way. They would just, what we see is neighbors who want to, I guess, beautify them instead of making them grass, making them have a little bit more aesthetic appeal.
I ask because I know of a particular local lawn care firm that ends up mowing the one in the Briarwood area on a regular basis, which that lawn care firm doesn't mind, which is curious. And I thought I would ask since they're receiving money at this time.
Yes.
Dana?
I just wanted to thank Neighborhood and Community Services just for being creative during, you know, all the challenges for finding ways to continue to help neighborhoods strengthen where they live. I know as we are all working from home and doing, teaching kids math from home, that our neighborhoods, again, just so clear how important they are to our health and well-being. So just grateful to Neighborhood and Community Services for continuing to find ways to help us strengthen our neighborhoods.
No one else? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Danning? Wilkerson is yes. Next is Municipal Order 2020-165. Municipal Order authorizing the creation of a BG Cares Small Business Grant Program with small businesses who qualify for economic relief. Motion by Wilkerson II, by Perigent, Mr. Mazel.
As you all know, back in the summer, you got word that the state was going to allocate some of their CARES Act money to local governments. The state of Kentucky got $1.7 billion. And so they decided to give around $300 million of that, divvy that up to local governments. Bowling Green ended up with about $4.9 million of CARES Act money from the first, first act of the federal government that they issued. And so back in late June and early July, Brent, Katie and I started thinking things we could do with this money to, to help the community. Started brainstorming. And so like a lot of other communities, we thought that, you know, given the fact that the small businesses had been shut down for several months, people were hurting in that area, especially the restaurants, small business owners that were not considered to be essential businesses. They were forced to shut down and had to get needed assistance. So Brent has put together kind of some framework for this BG Cares Small Business Grant Program that we are proposing here tonight. Steal this thunder, but we are proposing to allocate $1,008,855 of our CARES Act money to local small businesses. With this CARES money that we received, we've been closely monitoring our own financial situation these last couple of months and still watching it. But we feel comfortable that we can move forward with this $1,008,855 and give that to applicants that, that apply. We thought that, you know, given the fact that the... I'm hearing echoes. So I'm going to turn this over to Brent to give you an overview of this program.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening to Mayor Commissioners. So as Jeff talked about, we've been working on developing this program for, for some time, ready to launch it. You've seen a similar type program exist in many other communities across the US using CARES Act funding. So this isn't something that is brand new in response to the COVID pandemic. But it's something that's new to us and the size and scope of it is, is quite large too. As Jeff talked about, looking at $1.885 million, what we'll be doing is providing one-time financial assistance to qualified small businesses located in the city limits of Bowling Green. They have to be less than 50 full-time employees or full-time equivalents. And then we have a breakpoint on the size of the grant. So businesses with one to 25 full-time equivalents or full-time employees would be eligible for $2,500. 26 to 50 would be eligible for $5,000. That's how this will work. There's an application online that's live right now at BGKY.org/BG-Cares. BG-Cares. That's how they set it up. We'll also be pushing it out through social media, working through our professional networks. Also lean on you all as leaders in the community. If you think about small businesses and you think about those that have been impacted, so you think about going back to March, April, May, when the, when the period of quarantine is what I call it, when those were forced to shut down and they lost all their revenue, they lost all their income, they lost all those opportunities to continue to see their, their businesses flourish. Those are the ones we're really trying to target. These are really small mom and pop type businesses. The application is set up to be a very straightforward application so that a, a business owner with no professional staff, no accountants, none of, none of the legal teams are necessary could really just work through this and just provide us their contact information. They have to be registered with the city. They have to have a business license, you know, those sorts of things. But then they can fill it out at the dining room table, submit it in, and then be eligible to receive that. So based on those amounts, we're anticipating somewhere between 600 to 700 assistance grants out there in the community. We felt like the timing is good now that we're starting to see some restart to the economy. We had some updated news from the chamber today. But really, we need to make sure that our small businesses continue to succeed. I think Bowling Green has always been a, a very much a business-first community. And I think this is an example of us looking at it from a business-first standpoint, really focusing on the small local businesses. So I want to appreciate Jeff for his support as we move forward with this program. With that, Commissioner Nash?
Yeah, I, I really just wanted to say thank you to you, Brent, and to Jeff and to Katie for really working on this initiative. It is really important. I, I think the government is as healthy as the businesses in the community. And I think the fact that you took the initiative to try to carve out some of this CARES money to put it right back into the economy says a great deal about you and about Katie and about Jeff. So I just thank you for doing so.
Thanks, sir.
Dana, do you have a question?
Yeah, I want to echo those words of thanks and just say thank you all for, you know, helping us support our local businesses and the entrepreneurs and small business owners that we have here. They're definitely a beautiful part of our city and makes it the vibrant, wonderful place it is to live. And I know so many of them have really suffered this year. And so just a couple of questions I have are, I know with the federal level CARES Act funding for small businesses, there are some lessons learned from that situation where maybe some of the funding went to some, some bigger companies that had access to, you know, bankers and other places that could help them sort of snatch all of the funds and then more smaller local companies didn't get it. So how are we, you know, learning those lessons from the federal level? What mechanisms do we have to make sure, you know, our food trucks, our restaurant owners, our really local folks, not absentee owners of businesses here, but our small business owners are the ones who are going to receive this benefit and help them continue to, to grow their business here in Bowling Green?
Yeah, so a couple of ways looking at that is what I was talking about a while ago, is that you don't have to have bankers and accountants to fill out the application. You just need to be able to sit down and know your business ID, your business name, your phone number, your email and answer some questions. It's a two-page application with the last page being initials and sign off. So really kept it focused down so that the mom and pop running businesses could, could do this without having professional expertise. Also, if business received PPP funding previously, then there won't be... be eligible. So we're really trying to target that smaller base business so that the bigger bigger businesses don't benefit from this program. That's why you have a fifty-person limit cap on that. We felt like that was a good number based on the employment and looking at it. And they also have to be less than two million dollars in gross revenues. So we're really targeting to that small business. Then it comes down to marketing and outreach. So it's really looking at who do we network with? Who do we talk to? So I've got staff that have been working on that and ready to deploy this tomorrow. The chamber will be promoting it, too, as through their membership. And then I also ask you all, as you know of businesses that that fall into that category, send them to the website. Let them make sure that they apply. If you don't apply, you're not going to get funded. So you have to apply. We're going to take up. We've got an application period, but it's going to run until we run out of money. And at some point, we're going to run out of money, and then we're going to cut it off. This is a one-time thing. This is not an annual program, but it is really designed and built around that thought of the small business in mind.
Sue?
Yeah, I want to say a big, big fat thank you to everybody that worked on this to get this money out into the community and keep our economy flowing and going. And but I did have one one small question. I I know I know firsthand that consulting folks were left out of PPE, were left out of unemployment, and were left out of, you know, pretty much everything because we're for ourselves. And and I have a small consulting company that, you know, came to a screeching halt. Will those folks be eligible? Not me. I'm not. I won't. I won't be applying. I'm not saying that. But I have I have, you know, a fair amount of folks that are in my circle that do similar work that that I network with and and we're just basically left out of pretty much everything because you're a consultant that works for yourself.
And so it is open to all businesses that are based here in Bowling Green. So that would be one caveat. They have to be registered, have to provide all their information. But then the other aspect of it is have to be negatively impacted by COVID. So they can articulate what that means for a restaurant to the barber shops or some of the other personal service places. That's pretty easy because they were shut down based on the governor's orders for three months. Other businesses maybe weren't shut down based on that, but they were still negatively impacted. So they have to articulate that. And then we'll review it and make a determination from there.
Yeah, not being able to have training programs or leadership development programs in person has been a real problem for a lot of folks. But anyway, thank you for that answer. Appreciate all your work on this. And I think it's going to make a huge, huge impact in the mom and pop businesses.
I hope so.
All right, I appreciate your work on this, Brent. I know how hard it is to come up with a program because people want you to do something. Yet the federal government, the state government have already thrown a lot of money around. So you don't want to duplicate those efforts trying to just do something. So thank you for looking to make this nice, hardy. We'll roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Now, we've already done the next two items on the agenda. So we go to municipal order twenty twenty one sixty-eight municipal order authorizing payment to the Warren County Property Evaluation Administrator for fiscal year twenty twenty-one motion by Wilkerson and second by Perrigen, Mr. Mazel. You're on. You're on the mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. This is our annual payment to the PVA's office for our tax assessment that we received recently. Tax bills went out back in early October. Get mixed up on what today is. Today is twentieth. And they went out on the first, Katie. So we were right on time. But under KRS, we were required to pay sixty thousand dollars. That is currently the max amount for a city of our our size, which we're still under the five billion dollar annual assessment. Once we get over five billion, I think the price goes up again. Katie can correct me. Six billion. Sorry, six billion is is the next tier. So anyway, we we have received the tax roll, and now we need approval to pay the PVA our required amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order twenty twenty one sixty-nine municipal order approving tax increment financing district summary of twenty nineteen incremental revenue and authorizing distributions to the appropriate recipients. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen, Mr. Mazel.
It's hard to believe, but this is the twelfth year of distributions for the TIF district, our incremental revenues. Want to thank Sean Weeks for all of his work on this over in fighting. This is I'll be I'll just shoot straight with you. I started this in two thousand eight, and this is all done with an Excel spreadsheet. It's about a sixty-page Excel spreadsheet, multi-layered. And it it very it was very complex in two thousand eight, and it's even multiplied past that now in two thousand nineteen. This is the two thousand nineteen tax year. And I'd like to thank Sean for all his work on this. It's it's very, very complicated in some of these blocks. Katie knows as well. She works hard on it as well, looking it over and and checking and double checking. But I'm going to hand this off to Katie, and she can answer any questions you have on this or give you a quick overview if you like. It's up to you all.
We have the information. Were there any questions or comments about the data? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order twenty twenty one seventy municipal order approving fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement program for the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Perrigen.
I'm going to hand this one off to Katie as well. She's worked hard on this along with Marilyn Perrigen. Like to thank them for all of their hard work on this document. It's a three-year CIP plan that Katie's put together. It's a it's a best practice under GFOA. We want to keep doing that and bringing it to you tonight. So Katie, you want to give give the gist of this? Did you lose your mind? Okay.
Okay, I'm there. I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. So as Jeff mentioned, this is a multi-year document that we try to update annually. So the only piece of this document that's actually set in stone is the fiscal year twenty-one budget, which you all adopted. And the memo outlines just a few changes from the time that we adopted the budget to putting this document together. So I won't belabor that. But the the other three years, fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are not set in stone. They're all tentative and subject to change based on the priorities of the Board of Commissioners, based on the budget we have available and other resources available. And so please don't think that that's exactly how it's going to happen in those years with some of those projects because it's just not the way it does happen. A lot of these projects we don't want to lose sight of that we want to start saving for. And so we put them on the plan, particularly road projects, because we want to make sure that the Planning Commission can update the official map based on the long-term plan of the Board of Commissioners. So that's really the purpose behind this document. It's not so much to say that we're going to do those projects in those years. It's just to say that these are projects that we would like to do at some point in the future, again, based on the priorities at that particular time. And as we put those budgets together, what can we afford? What can we not afford? And that sort of dictates what the final budget will be in the year that that the CIP plan for that year is adopted. So again, if you have any questions about any particular project, please, I'd be glad to respond to.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yeah.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. We've already done the next municipal order. So we'll go to the first reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty number thirty-five ordinance annexing property by consent ordinance annexing two hundred ninety-eight point seven acres of properties located at zero and three forty-four Fred Madison Road, zero Glasgow Road, and eleven eighty-eight Missau Road, presently owned by the Intermodal Transportation Authority, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits. I should have done that one when Mr. Bunch was still with us. I apologize. I didn't do it at that time. This is the first reading of the transport annexation. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? And Wilkerson is yes. That's first reading. The next, the final reading will be at our next meeting. Next is first reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty thirty-six ordinance naming a street ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed alley connecting Alumni Avenue and Thirteenth Avenue between Adams Street and Kentucky Street to Bridge Alley. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Perrigen. As you can see, it was an unnamed alley, and Mrs. Alley requested this be named for delivery purposes, and they chose something to help them with their program at the Autism Center, Bridge Alley. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Ashley, double check. Did I cover all the items on the agenda? We jumped around a lot. We're good. Did you want to give us any direction as we move forward? No, I can't talk. Okay. As you know, we'll be going into closed session. I'll do a motion and second on that in just a moment. But you'll have to close completely out of all of the programs that you have up with regard to the city, then go go back into life size and dial in on the information that you've received on your appointment on your email. Any questions about that? Yes, sir?
Will there be any action coming out of the meeting?
Be no action coming out. Thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, there are no public comments. So on behalf of Wilkerson, the motion, and Perrigen making a second, we'll be going into closed session pursuant to CARES sixty-one, eight, ten, one, C for the purpose of discussions of pending litigation against the city. Again, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perrigen. I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? And Wilkerson is yes. So we'll close this meeting to go into closed session. Any other questions about how to get there?
Can we can we have about two minutes to?
Yes.
Really quick break.
We'll come come back in closed session in about seven oh five, if that's okay.
That's ten minutes? Okay.
Twelve minutes, thirteen minutes, yeah.
Okay.